Roll call please.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Ms. Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
That's it?
Thank you, Kitty's outside, but he'll be on the way in.
Okay.
Items under discussion, special programs, Dr. Edwards?
Yeah, we wanted to just get in front of you today in regards to some staffing issues that we're facing in special education department with teachers and parent professionals. And the real reason behind it is, I think we need to take somewhat of a proactive approach because it very well could affect us from a lawsuit standpoint because of the offerings. And they're doing everything, they're in compliance right now, they're doing everything that they can, but they're facing some serious challenges from a staffing standpoint. So DLO and Dr. Coniston are here today to kind of provide you with the information. And then at the end of the day, I think the purpose of the work session is for you to provide us with guidance as a team to go back and bring you a recommendation to May, to the May board meeting on what you would like us to do. So we have ideas. We met with Latonya and Kim yesterday because they could not be here today. They had some great ideas, and so anyway, we'll turn it over to them, we'll kind of let you listen for now. So, Michelle?
Well, thanks for having us. We're going to start with the staffing trends that we have had over the last four years. So for the last four years, we've been tracking teachers and pares and how many we have in each building over time. And as you can see, for elementary, it's not too alarming. In 1819, we had 35 special education teachers, and this year, we have 30, so that's down five. For parent professionals, we've gone from 35 to 33. It is very common for us on a yearly basis, and sometimes during the school year, if needs warrant it, to have to move staff. So we might have a teacher or parent professional in one building, and if we have a population shift, or if we have a student move in, or a significant shift in demographics, we might have to go to that teacher and say, hey, we really need you to come over to this building, and then move them to that building. When you look at middle school, middle school's running the same about four teachers. We've gone from 19 teachers in 1819, down to 21, 22 this year, 15. But then look at the pares. We've gone from 19 pares to 10 pares. That doesn't mean we haven't needed those pares, it means they're not out there, they are not applying. And high school is even more significant. So we're down four and a half teachers, and we are down 11 parent professionals. So overall, for our district, it's pretty bleak.
Maybe, and maybe you're going to get to it, but so maybe they understand what's happened to the numbers of kids during that same time, or the numbers of challenges, is that something that's come up?
Yes, it's coming up.
Got ahead of you.
It's coming up. We just wanted to start with the basic numbers first. So you can see, we are down 13 and a half special education teachers in our special programs department. So there are special education teachers in the school district who are certified special education teachers, but do not teach special education. These are teachers who are teaching special education. And then for parent professionals, we are down 22. I don't think we can say that one is more damaging than the other, they are both significantly damaging, being that low. Right now, at Parkway Elementary, we have had a significant change in population from last year to this year. We have multiple retirees working at Parkway to try to plug holes and fill gaps, because we do not have the adult support to be able to do what we need to do. And so fortunately, we've been able to maintain those relationships with retirees, and they're going in and they're filling the holes and filling the gaps at Parkway Elementary right now. We've also had retirees this year at Hosea Elementary and at Edison Elementary. Do you want to add anything on this? When we make staffing decisions, one of the things I don't know that everybody realizes is, we are a very database department. All of our decisions are based on numbers, and so we wanted to share some of that information with you. We shared this with Latonya yesterday, and Kim Miller yesterday. So our special education teachers work off of an alternative caseload, which is a DUCI formula, basically saying, this is the amount of staff that you need. This is a live document, and for the last four years, we've been using this document, and teachers plug in, I'm going to see if I can make this bigger. So teachers plug in, and we're going to go to Hyde, how many students they case manage, which means they're responsible for making sure they have a compliant IEP, a compliant evaluation, that the students are getting the service minutes that they require, and for service minutes, a student might have service minutes in basic reading, so they might get 60 minutes a week in basic reading, they might get occupational therapy. Our total contact minutes right here, where you can see for Hyde, Teri Gabbard, so she case manages 18 students, and she provides 5,720 minutes of services for her 18 students.
In what time period?
In a week, within a week. And Anna Johnson has 13 for 5,460. We do not take into account any speech or language minutes, any occupational therapy, physical therapy, these are just minutes that are provided by the teacher.
That's a lot of minutes in a week.
That's really not a lot of minutes compared to other buildings.
In a week it is, so.
And so when you go through, it kind of figures out our formula. We try to keep our teachers, we like to keep them at about 30 for this all caseload number at the very end. The state says it can be higher, but we have found that if it is higher, it's really not And once the number gets higher than 30, then we start to kind of jeopardize some of our paperwork, our legal compliance, the type of support students need, and so we try to keep this at 30. And we try to keep it at 30 for all grade levels, so whether that's elementary, middle school, or high school. So this is one of the things that we are constantly monitoring, and like I said, it's live.
And these are really just based off of, so that everybody, these aren't your most severe and profound students, these are your kids who are getting academic support.
Correct.
Part-time, coming out of their regular ed classroom.
Correct.
Going someplace, or having somebody come into their classroom and interact with them. So it's both pull-out and push-in numbers that are fitted into it.
Yes, it is. But you can also look like, if we pull up Edison right here, where the numbers are very high, these would be programming rooms where we have the highest needs.
So you have multiple types of classrooms of special education in the district, does everybody understand that? But you have some classrooms where kids are basically there all day long because of their needs, and then there's others where you just have kids with a learning disability in some way, shape, or form in a regular ed classroom, that are either coming out and getting support, or the teacher or a para is going in to get support.
Kind of like kids who have speech therapy or...
Right, exactly. Exactly. So we monitor this all the time. You can see here for Hyde, like Mrs. Gabbard's updated hers by four. So she just updated hers, whereas Anna Johnson updated hers on April 7th. We like to keep them updated within a month, so we want them to be as current as possible. That way, we can keep kind of our fingers on the pulse of what's happening in the buildings, and what the needs are in the buildings. So this is one of the pieces of data that we are continually monitoring. The next one are grade level promotions. So when we're at this time of the year, we take a look at every student with an IEP, and we place them in a spreadsheet to try to predict what the numbers will look like the following year. So we're looking at Carden Park right now, and we have it broken down by all of the different services we provide in special education. And these are the students that we anticipate will attend Carden Park this year. This includes any kids coming out of early childhood that have an IEP that will be going to Carden Park, and we have taken out all of the sixth graders that are going to middle school, and we've put them on the middle school list that we anticipate they will attend. And so this way, we can also look at and try to anticipate what kind of staffing do we need for next year, because it is very, very fluid. So like here is a middle school. And we keep this current and up-to-date as well in the spring, so we can track it. Because the last thing we want to do, my first year in special programs in August, right before school started, I had to go around and tell eight teachers they were moving buildings. Not just moving buildings, but moving grade levels. We had teachers who were teaching elementary special education, we moved to high school. I don't ever want to have to do that. And so we implemented this, so we could try to predict ahead of time and see where the moves would need to be made.
And maybe you're going to get to this too, the other component with special education is that the minutes on a student can change from year to year based upon their needs. So what they have, that's why they ask for it to be updated monthly. So if it's, I was identified as special education, if I say something wrong, do you want me to shut up, there's something happening. If I've been identified as special education, I've become qualified, but I have to be reevaluated every three years.
Yes.
And so at that reevaluation time, my minutes could go up or down, and that happens anytime during the school year based upon when I enter special education. So not everybody happens in March, some happen in August, some happen in September, some happen in October. So your minutes and your needs for teachers can fluctuate all the time, which makes this a moving target.
Do they usually have kind of like a downward spiral, like do they go down usually, or is it more where increasing minutes?
It just depends, it goes both directions, honestly.
But there's not like one that's a little one another?
No, no, there isn't.
I would say, not in the academic side of things, your speech and language probably is the one, and some therapy will normally trend down, but your academic side of things, again, this is my take on it, probably as many as you have going up, you have a number going down, so it can flush out, but they all don't happen at the same time of the year, so it doesn't trend together. So you may get hit with a spike of minutes, and then you get a downward spike two months later, because you had some kids lose minutes.
Or you could even have a student where the teacher or the parent says they're really struggling in this, can we relook at this IEP, and we decide to increase some of their services. And so all of that goes into play.
It's not uncommon for a family to move into our district also at any time. You know, we have high mobility within our district, but we also have families moving in regularly, and so that can totally throw off the numbers in a building real quick.
You bring in one kid with high needs, and it could have a direct impact on...
And the other way around too, so it might about.
Right, or one leaves.
And then all of a sudden, you know, we have...
And then the last piece, and this is something that DLO started when she was principal at Edison, and we implemented this year, they are five-minute schedules, and why don't you talk about these? This is just an example.
So one of the things that we found, as staffing became more of a challenge over the last few years, was that we had to really look at all of our data, like Michelle said, and then look at our, actually each day, and see, are we utilizing our staff to their fullest capacity? Because we had, when you're in a building with multiple special education teachers, multiple pares, and you're servicing all these different kids, there's a lot of moving parts, right? And so in order to try to do that, we had come up with, at Edison when I was there, because we had a lot of staff, a five-minute schedule, so that together, we could look at everybody's needs, and see where there were pockets where we could fulfill, because there were no, we couldn't get any more staff at that time. I mean, I would go, can we please have another para, can we please, and there wasn't anybody to have. So we were able to find pockets of time where we might have 20 minutes, oh, we can pull this student for that service in that 20 minutes. Or we've had, this student needs, you know, transported, walked with, to a class, well, you know what, they can go ahead and now get this student, you know, that kind of thing. So really got very, very detailed in our schedule to see which students needed...
For efficiency, to drive efficiency.
Constantly, right? So it worked really well. I will say it's not popular with staff, because it appears that we're micromanaging, and in a sense, we have to, because we are looking to see how we can become more efficient with the staff that we have to meet the legal obligation to these students, right? So therefore, last year, we piloted with a few buildings that were struggling with staffing. We went in and did this, and we were able to find some pockets to get us by. And then this year, we made it mandatory for all special education staff to do a five-minute schedule. And again, it wasn't popular, but we were able to squeak by, because we were able to find some pockets. So this is really just to show you all that we have looked at data, and we have really become as efficient as we feel that we can be at this point.
Because one of the things is, we don't want anyone to be under the guise that we feel we need more staff, or we feel like we're having a hard time finding staff. We really make database decisions, and that's why we wanted to share this with you, so you can say, this is not, we think we're in a staffing crunch, or we feel we're in a staffing crunch. We are in a staffing crunch.
We're not crying wolf.
We're not crying wolf, exactly. And so that is why we wanted to share all the steps that we take to ensure we know what we're dealing with in every single one of our schools. Does anybody have any questions so far? Nope. Okay.
I guess what, maybe I'm jumping the gun, but maybe, I guess my question is, what solutions have been talked about already?
Oh, we're going to get there.
Okay.
We got you, thank you, David. So here are our current openings, and I will say that our current openings right now are not alarming as far as numbers. What is alarming is the lack of applications we receive. In past years, it's not uncommon for us to have seven openings in May. But we would be getting applicants, and qualifications, qualified applications continually in order to fill positions. We have gone months this year...
I think March, like middle March was our last step.
Yes.
Yeah.
Where we're not getting qualified applicants to be special education teachers. And for parent professionals, it's even harder. DLO and I have spent countless hours trying to recruit, interview, screen applicants for parent professional positions. We have done it all year long, and we're still...
Also, we had pulled back, or you had done it before I got here, but...
Oh, yeah.
Had pulled back the hiring through the special programs office. So in the prior, different buildings, if they had an opening, they would post that position, just like they would for a classroom teacher. But when everything got really tight, we really needed to pull that back to our office, the reason being, one school would not have any trouble finding a teacher or a para because of the school where the opening was. Another school might be drowning and have a much higher need, but they weren't getting any applicants. So when that was pulled back, and that was during, before I was here, but you can speak more on that if you would like, but the reason for that was so that we could evaluate where the greatest need is, and then place staff in those locations.
Because special education is really, it's a very, we have a lot of legal compliance that we have to follow. And so it is one thing if we have one building that can attract a lot of applicants, but if they are not needed there, and they're needed in another building, we have to staff the other building first. If we are not providing service minutes as they are written in an individualized education plan, then we are out of compliance with the law, which puts our district at risk for litigation, and then we're not providing what students need, what we're saying that they need in order to be successful. So this year, right now, currently, to squeak by, to meet what we have currently today, we need seven special education teachers. Two of those teachers being programming teachers. We also need 15 parent professionals. That is just a squeak by. To optimally staff our buildings in special education, we need 10 teaching positions, two of those being programming, and 23 parent professionals. So when we're talking programming, those are rooms, we have programming rooms at Edison this year, we have two programming rooms. We have two at Oak Grove, one at Truman, and two at Lafayette. And so our programming rooms are where we are providing services and educating our students with the greatest need. Quite often, in those classrooms, we have students who are non-verbal, they're adapt, they need a lot of help adaptively, as well as cognitively, it's a very comprehensive, they need comprehensive support. And so we staff those at a higher rate, and it is a different kind of teaching. We're teaching more functional academics. And so right now, we need two teachers there. We need one for Lafayette High School, and we need one for elementary. One of our other challenges is, we are having to increase the number of programming rooms every year. So this year, we added two at elementary. We only had two, so we doubled it. We could probably add another one for next year. Next year, we're going to double the number of middle school classrooms for programming, because the needs that we're receiving from families coming in are so much more significant. When you staff a programming classroom, that's typically going to be one special education teacher and up to three parent professionals. So you're looking at four staff members to fill one of those rooms. So for two classrooms, those two programming rooms will need two teachers, and will need about six parent professionals, just to staff two rooms. Some of the barriers that we face...
Michelle, I'm sorry, on that last slide, you said we needed two programming, is that the two new ones, or have we lost two programming?
No, we've lost two.
So now since you need four programming rooms.
We don't have the one on there, if we end up needing to add one more to learn how, I don't think we have that.
For middle school, the one we're going to add, we've pulled from another sped position and put them in. So the barriers that we face, that a lot of people don't understand, and that's part of the reason we're glad to be here with you guys today, is the special education workload, it is significantly different than what a regular education teacher does. And so if you look at that list, we have reevaluations, observations, report writing, lesson planning, sped track entries, meetings, all of those are different from a regular education teacher, with the exception of lesson planning. And so for everything we do in special ed, the special education process, it is very specific, it is very thorough.
Their legal documents.
They're legal documents.
So we need to ensure that they're accurate and compliant.
And so it is a lot of work, it is a lot of pressure, and special education runs on very tight timelines. And so when we say, if a special education teacher has five kids who have evaluations due, they only have a certain amount of time to get that finished. And so timeliness is of the essence. And so their workload is significant. I'm not going to say that it is necessarily harder than a regular education teacher, but it looks very, very different, and the pressures are different. Another barrier that we have are in-district transfers of staff. And actually, right before we got here today, just to give you an example, we, DLO received a phone call, and we have a school who, a special education teacher transferred to PE for next year, and the school would like to hire a teacher to fill the special education position, but the special education, the person they want for that role is not certified in special ed. And it's really a double-edged sword, because if you have somebody teaching special education who, and they do a good job, and they work hard, and they're willing to do all of these pieces, at some point, they say, you know what, I've done my time in special education, I want to get out. I want to teach PE, or I want to teach facts, or I want to teach elementary, and we don't let them go, then they're probably going to leave the district and go somewhere that they can do those things. So when we let that happen, the people that are applying to fill those positions are most frequently not certified special education teachers. So we probably have, Dr. Kraus, maybe 40 people certified in special education in the district who do not teach special education.
Forty to 50, I would say.
Forty or 50. So that really is a barrier. And I think we've probably lost six this year for next year.
And do you think it's...
No, it's okay.
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. Do you think it's because they're not certified, and they're not trained to kind of do the work that they are leading?
No, these are certified people.
They're certified.
These are certified people.
That have chosen that they would like to work in another field in education, so another...
Just a hard job.
Right.
Real hard job.
That's it. And so we've lost already six for next year, who have been currently, who this year are teaching special ed, who next year are not teaching special education.
Because our numbers wouldn't have looked as dire if they would have stayed this year.
So one thing, Dr. Kraus, to jump in on this, one thing Dr. Kraus and I talked about was establishing a practice whereby we build a timeline. If you are hired as a special education teacher within the district, you remain in that position, in that certified area, for three or five years before you are able to apply for a transfer within the district to another area of certification. Because, you know, some people try to get into the district, because we're in Northwest Missouri, it's the largest district in the area, they don't want to drive into the city, and then, within one year or two years, they want to transfer into a different certificated area. So instead of that, putting in to place a practice whereby they have to stay in special education for, you know, maybe three or five years before they're eligible to apply for transfer into a different area. So that was one of the resolutions we brainstormed earlier in the year as a possibility, not in place yet, but just something that we have discussed.
Adequate time for professional development specific to special education, and I'll turn that over to DLO.
So Michelle and I recently went to a conference, a legal conference, and we've known this, because there have been challenges with professional development specific, I mean, our teachers need very specific training to be able to do those jobs that we just mentioned, reevaluations, do appropriate observations, all these legal documents, right? They're also required to know our curriculum, reg ed curriculum, because they are supporting those students. So it's imperative that they go to and they learn our curriculum, so they can support our curriculum academically, but they also need specialized PD. And so having time to do that has really been a challenge, because we have to choose, do we want them to attend professional development that the district is providing for all teachers, which they really need to have? Or what is our risk? Or do we pull them and go on their very specialized professional development, which they also need, and there's not time in the current calendar to do both? And so that has been a challenge, so they get what we can give them during job-embedded PD, after-school or before-school meetings, which again, goes, you know, to that department meetings and whatnot. So we do provide what we can with the time allowed to do so, but that has been a challenge, and I believe that is an area of risk for us, especially after going to that conference. It really brought it to light, that I feel like we have an obligation to these teachers, and to ensure that they are also receiving the professional development. So that's an area that I really would like for us to think about, and see how we can become creative in ensuring that they have the training that they deserve. And I believe personally, I believe I could speak for you too, in the fact that when a teacher feels that they are adequately... teacher feels that they are adequately trained, there's also, they feel more comfortable in their role, and they're gonna have some more job satisfaction also, so that's an area I'm hoping that we can work on.
I think even if they're adequate, adequately trained, they don't feel like they have enough time to do anything they have to do.
They don't, they don't, no, they don't. That's a whole other.
Even if they have a master's degree.
No, no, that's exactly true, and the law's changing all the time, so we have to continue training them.
Well, and I think, and we've talked about this before, is that if you're in a building where the regular education teachers and the special education teachers work together, instead of feeling like special education is siloed in the problem solver for every kid that has academic issues, if you feel like you're siloed, you feel like you're working in isolation. And we have to remember that the special education teacher not only working with kids, but they're working with the teachers in the regular education classroom of those students as well, because not every kid is out for the whole day. So they're going back into the classroom, those regular education teachers are coming to the special ed teachers saying, Doug is struggling in math, but he's only coming to you for reading. Well, a lot of math is now about reading, so they want skills and help and support in other areas and other ways, and so that is another issue that maybe isn't necessarily on there, but the isolation, but at the collaborative time is very needed as well.
Keeping up with the IEPs, upgrading them and all that.
Yeah, because those are all bound by timelines and federal law of how often that has to happen, and when it should happen.
We've talked about this a bit, but the intense level of student needs, I don't know that it's just coming off of COVID, where students were kind of, or children were not being out and being social, or what the actual root is, but the students that we have been getting the last couple of years have significant needs, and they require significant staffing, and staff that has been trained appropriately. Student needs might be, we might have students who are physically aggressive, who run, who need help toileting, or need a diaper changed, who have feeding tubes.
De-robe.
What?
We've had some that are de-robe.
Oh.
I mean, so you need a person there with that student. Yeah, extreme needs.
And I'm sure sometimes if you're thinking, picturing this in your head, you're thinking little people. We have older students, Dr. McGinnis has them in her building, that require support for toileting, who de-robe, who run down the hall, that need significant support, and the behaviors are related to their disability. However, they, we need appropriate staffing in order to provide those supports to those students.
We received a transfer student from a small district that never showed up.
Absenteeism of these students, missing school, is there any kind of record of, I know we have a lot of absences with regular students since COVID, you know, we are saying we've got seventy-four percent attendance, is the special ed student, is it a larger percentage of absenteeism?
No, I don't think so.
I would think you'd probably find the opposite.
I would agree.
I think it would happen.
At Lafayette, our special programming, they're all above ninety percent, except for one kid who has a medical
So are actually attending more, the majority of our kids, because their parents, for
the most part, understand the help and support that they get, and they also understand that it's a time for them to recharge their batteries a little bit, while somebody else is helping their kid learn life skills and academic skills as well. So I think that, in at least my experience, having worked with special ed students, the majority number, similar with Asher's talk, but they're there almost all the time. And that's also because they've built relationships with the adults that are there, because they're so connected to their learning.
And several of them have case managers, and their time and goals are measured that way, too.
Well, and Dr. Williams had just stated, you know, we just had a student move in, if a student, if a student moves in, we honor their IEP, we try to, we call it mirroring, we mirror what they have. So if a student comes in from another district, and they have significant supports on there, we have to implement it as written. We had one that came in last week, who came in and requires a very intense placement, and so we have to put that student right in. It doesn't matter if we don't have the staff. We have to provide those services as written on this legal document for these students. And that's kind of where we're getting into trouble, not trouble, trouble's not the right word, where we're really challenged is when we do have students come in with significant needs, and they go to a building. How do we restructure, how do we look at that five minute schedule? Do we look at five minute schedules for all these other buildings and see who we can move over, or maybe somebody can split time between two buildings, which then, if you have somebody going from, let's say, Mark Twain to Parkway, you're losing time because they're having to travel, when they could be with students. And so it is a, it is a really big
And pay mileage.
And pay mileage, complex web.
And the challenge is, you can't put kids in programming, you base your programming off of the needs of kids, because otherwise you're in violation of their IEPs, you can't say, well, we have this program over here, so it's close enough, let's put Doug in that program. If it doesn't line up with what the IEP team has said needs to be done, you have to figure out how you still provide those services to meet those demands, you just can't say, well, this is close enough, so we're gonna be good.
The next barrier we have are small buildings. So we have some very small elementary schools in our district that might have one special education teacher, one paraprofessional, and in some situations, that's extremely inefficient. Because maybe that teacher could also go to another building and provide support, but by the time they drive there, if they're not on the same schedule, it's really not going to work. If that makes sense at all. The other piece with the small buildings is that we have a lot of buildings that are on the cusp, so they're stretched super thin with one or two teachers, but if we give them another one, they have some extra room, we really can't get by, it, it just makes it hard. If we had, and I'm not saying that I'm a proponent for large schools or large elementary schools, but all of these small elementary schools that we have make it very, very difficult to staff for special education.
It's just as we have looked at, more ways to be more efficient, that is, that would be one way that we feel that we could be more efficient if we didn't have staff spread out the way they currently have to be spread out.
And they're not on the same time schedule, as you mentioned, which creates challenges.
So if you're looking at like an elementary, and we say Mark Twain needs support, the only school that might be able to provide support, that we could send a teacher over for a couple of hours, might be on a completely different bell schedule, they might have a different starting and ending time, so it might not work. And so that, so we have created, not by any fault of our own, but we have created some of our own barriers, just by the way things are set up.
Well, if we have a definite number of teachers that we need, and if we have a definite number of students, could we schedule the students to be at the schools, where the teachers are, you know, where we, I mean, would that help us be more efficient? I mean, even if they don't live in that neighborhood.
You mean move students to different schools?
Yeah, I mean, they're bused anyway, you know.
Well, number, number one, we are obligated to ideally first send students to their homeschool. So we should be sending our students, if we live in this neighborhood, we should be sending them to their school.
I agree, but you got a limit to what we can do, though.
I agree, and then we have other situations, where if you think about, let's say, we have a fourth grader or a fifth grader who's never received special education services, and all of a sudden they become eligible, so in November of their fifth grade year, we're just gonna pick them up and move them to another school, so they could receive special ed services? It doesn't seem quite right, and it doesn't seem like it's what's best for the student. I get that there's a staff member there.
But those are some of the challenges.
Those are the challenges, exactly.
But is that, is that a, it doesn't seem to me like someone in the fourth grade would all of a sudden need to have special needs, seems like they would start with special needs.
No.
We have a lot of things in place to ensure that we have
So it's an environmental situation, then?
No, no.
Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes what happens is developmental, but you also, when you really take a look at the qualifications to be in special education, you basically have to be two years behind cognitively in order to qualify for special education. So if you're a kindergartner in the first grade or the second grader, and you're not two years behind, you have to keep going to third grade, fourth grade sometimes to qualify, because there are qualifying criteria, and that's, that's a generalization, but it is pretty much you have to be two years, basically two years behind. So you do get kids that are qualifying third grade, fourth grade, because they
I would say those are biggest.
Yeah.
Because that's where developmentally, they've now fallen that far behind, so it is a developmental component, but it's based off of some criteria that's put in place based off the law, does that make sense?
Yeah, sure, yeah, and the laws are changing, right?
Yeah, and they do, that criteria's not ever really changed since I've been in, but some of the other things that you have to do in special education, it's almost always been, you know, basically you're two years behind in order to qualify. Which is part of the struggle, because now they're already two years behind, and how do you catch up people that are two years behind, on top of teaching them what they're supposed to know this year? Very difficult.
It's very difficult. The next one is something that we experienced, I think DLO can probably tell better than I can, a situation we had, the cost of certification and fingerprinting.
So like Michelle said, we have been interviewing anybody that we can, that has applied, and working really hard, and we had an applicant for a paraprofessional position, we were really excited about that we got in, a parent in our district, they were excited about the possibility to be on the same schedule as their children and whatnot. However, when we got to the kind of the end of the interview, and we knew that she was not, she didn't have her para and sub certification, or she hadn't taken the para test, you can, either way, she found out the cost of that and the fingerprinting, and she said, I, I mean, that was a barrier. So we encouraged her to let us know once that had happened, she said it could take, you know, a couple weeks to a month to get the funds to do that, we've never heard back. So I know that that, we have these positions, I believe we have people out there that would possibly apply, that would be good employees for our district, but we have a barrier for the cost to get certified, also within that, and for the fingerprinting, also with the pay, the amount of pay that they get paid, which we recently have increased some, but when you look at that, that it's a nine month job, and it's divided out over twelve months, it goes down even more. I have another situation I might as well share.
Might as well.
So it's just been coming a lot, and so a wonderful, wonderful paraprofessional down at Third Lane Learning Center, who has done a fabulous job, and I worked with her to try to get her to stay on, she is a single mom of three children, she could not make a livable wage as a paraprofessional, we reached out to see if there was anything else we could do. She, her daughter was working at Target, making more money, so she chose to quit full time and go part time, so she's still working for us two days a week, now she's subbing the other three days a week, because she can take home more, because even though the whole package, you know, she would look at insurance and everything, the total package might be more to be a full time employee, but her daily, her take home pay is gonna be more by being a substitute. So the combination, she loves it down there, and she did not want to leave, so that's kind of a compromise. So I do know it's a barrier, I wish it, you know, we could do something about that, because we want to keep the ones that we have, for one, and we want them to have job satisfaction, be able to live, but then also, we want to be able to attract people. So that's for paraprofessionals and teachers, but my recent experience has been with paraprofessionals.
So parking it down, is it about twelve dollars an hour, is that what a paraprofessional makes?
No.
Starting pay can be anywhere from twelve to around fourteen, depending on their certification and what type of position they're in. Our lowest paid are those that are non-sub certified and non-special ed, they'll start at twelve dollars an hour next year, that was one of the things we did to raise everybody to the fiftieth percentile. If our highest paid paras are those that are working in high needs, special ed, and are sub certified, they start significantly higher.
Do we also have to pay for, or do they have to pay for substance abuse testing?
No.
Do we pay for that?
We don't.
We don't.
We don't worry about it?
That's a legal issue. The only, the only group that we do post offer drug screens on our custodial staff, our operations folks. But no, we don't, there's legal issues, in fact, like with teachers, for instance, it's against the law, we couldn't do drug screens there, we could with our classified folks, but we haven't.
You'd be voluntary anyways. What's the situation she just described, is it because the person's not having to pay into the retirement system that their check would be different? Because as a substitute, you're not paying into the retirement system, right?
No, and, and in my mind, that's kind of convoluted thinking, because you're passing up a very lucrative pension.
Right, but if you're just looking at what your daily paycheck is gonna be today versus ten years down the road, or twenty years down the road to retirement, that's, they're giving up their insurance benefit and the retirement benefit in order for today twenty dollars, twenty, thirty dollars more, or whatever it would happen to be in their paycheck to just sustain themselves today, that's basically what they're getting, right?
So they can't get to retirement.
Right.
There's no reason to even talk to them about retirement, because they can't get there.
Well, and also
Can't feed your family at the beginning of
But that's why that person is choosing to do what they're doing, where other people sitting around the table will take a look at, there are other benefits that you're giving up, but the benefit of being able to put a little more food on the table or pay a bill outweighs what that's gonna be twenty years down the road, or fifteen years down the road for that person to retire.
And I've thought frequently about the person we interviewed and offered the job to for the paraprofessional, I think she really
She made an impression, and I wish, wish we had hired, been able to hire her.
And I think about, I believe it was a hundred and twenty-six dollars is what she was gonna be out of pocket to take the para exam and to get her fingerprints, and that's a lot of money.
She came to the interview, it was significantly early, I think thirty-five to forty minutes early.
I think she rode the bus.
She, she tried.
She tried.
How long ago was that?
Is that typically what it falls, like one hundred and twenty-six?
Your test, your test and your certification, I believe that's the ballpark.
The fingerprinting, the fingerprinting's forty-one, seventy-five.
The test is eighty-five, right?
Yeah.
And I think it was eighty-something to take the exam, you know, she tried, she want, she wanted to work, she wanted to be on the same schedule as her children.
And we did have an opening at that school, too, so we were pretty excited, thinking that that would be a good fit. So anyways, I mean, that's not, maybe won't, not a cure all, but that's a barrier.
But that's also part of the, and we can't opt out of not having them or anybody pay into the retirement program, we're bound to do that, based off of state statute, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Kraus, but we're so, we're bound to, so we can't say, hey, do you want to opt in or opt out of having this? So that's, that's the other thing that ties our hands a little bit, for those folks is, it sounds like they've found out a way to kind of go around it, but it still is something that creates issues.
So if you work for a contracted company, like EduStaff for the substitutes, or we also contract with a couple of companies to provide special education services, those employees do not have retirement taken out of their check. So that's where the difference was for that paraprofessional, because she was working for EduStaff.
Well, and also, and I might not use the correct term, so Dr. Kraus, great bits, I don't want to say prorated, but it's allocated out over twelve months, because they get paid all summer, too.
Pays annualized.
Annualized, that's the word, I'm sorry, so it's annualized. So when you look at an hourly rate, and you think, okay, and calculate it, and I always explain that to them when we interview, and the reason is because I had a few people come back, and then they were like, I can't, I can't live on this, you said, I was gonna make this much per hour, and when I figured everything out, it wasn't that much money. But then when you But then when you take three months of a year and you annualize that out, it's really less than that. Now they're making it annually and they could go get a summer job or whatever. But they still have to be able to pay rent or a house payment and groceries and car, you know, they have to live, so.
But I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that was an option that I think you used to have, that they were paid over nine months and for whatever reason, the organization or somebody came back and said, we don't do that. We don't do a nine-month contract that's annualized. Isn't that accurate?
Yes, we were, we were paying certain groups nine months and everybody else 12. And the nine-month groups said, you know, why are we being treated differently? We should be paid 12 months like everybody else.
We used, and now it's, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've been at districts before that, that paid everybody 12 and then it was, well, we should be paid nine months. Why are we being paid 12? So you can't win.
No, I understand that. It used to be that way.
What can we do?
It used to be you could pick back in the day, back a long time ago.
Sign a paper.
We used to sign a paper saying if we wanted nine months or 12 months.
And when it was a, you could get your summer paychecks like all at once. So I can vouch for, we got a new deck one year. Pretty excited when I was teaching.
From, from an HR perspective, we don't care. I mean, it makes no difference in our office. I don't know what effect that has on the business office.
Yeah, yeah, payroll, it's gonna, it'll, it's tricky. But back to your point, Katie, it's doable. And that's, that was the whole purpose of this workshop today is for us to gather these types of comments and suggestions. We go back, we bring a recommendation back to you, we tell you why we can do this, why we can't.
I mean, if it solves the problem a little bit about getting people hired, just a little bit to do this, can't be much more than a clever. Are we regulated on what we can pay them? Let's do it. Why it's so low?
You can pay more, but you'll be in comparison to other groups that are paid hourly. They'll start, that's how those things play out in my experience. That if you pay your payers this and your secretarial staff this and your other custodial staff this. They, they want to be in comparison to surrounding other places, so. If you go, if you go too much, but that's part of the reason we even came and you did the changes that you did in special education. Because we do, we, there is a, not that every job's not important, but you can't tell me that having worked with special ed kids, having to lift a big kid, a bigger kid with a hoist and change their diaper and, that, that's a little more challenging than putting a book on the shelf in, in the library. Not that that's not vital because we need it for education, but it's a different level of, of what you have to do and a different level of interaction. That's why you made some of the changes that you did with how we're going to try to pay some of those folks moving forward.
And just so you know, from a conversation yesterday with Latonya and Kim, Latonya did ask us to put together numbers on, she wanted, you know, we had mentioned the top 50%, she wanted to know what that pay would be at top 10% in comparison to those districts. And then we also talked about, like with the professional development piece, we talked about extra days, contract days for special education teachers. And that's not uncommon because in several school districts, people, special education teachers have to come in a day early, two days early, whatever. So just, I, I just wanted you guys to understand that, that some of the things that she had brought up. What would be, there was something else too that she had brought up, do you remember?
Those were the big ones.
I know, it was the pay and then the.
Because that would address.
The extra PD. Oh, and then she said, why can't we pay for the cost of certification and fingerprinting? And I said, well.
And we talked about.
That's what the board wants us to do.
We did kind of veer off a little bit because we were talking about special programs in general. But if a job requires a certification and we hire someone, what does that look like as far as like we have, we cannot find a certified person and we hire a person that's not certified with the, and the state allows them to get a two-year temporary certification and have a plan of study to go back to school. Would that be a possibility to entertain paying for that certification in certain areas? And so of those high-needs areas, so that was something that was discussed.
And I was, I gave them an example in my previous district where there was like a $500 a year tuition reimbursement because the salary schedule was set up kind of similar to the way Dr. Kraus has it. But if you're forcing somebody to get education to go this way after five years, then you should supplement them a little something to get over there on a salary schedule like that. So that's just an idea of.
And I, I think one other little piece, just to kind of put out there, a lot of the things we've discussed entail money and funding. However, I think the track record for our department shows we run very legally compliant. We ensure that we are following the laws, that we are implementing plans, that we're providing the education. And a lawsuit due to not having adequate staffing would cost significantly more than funding some of these pieces that we were discussing.
So since you've become the director, how many lawsuits have you had?
Zero.
And we want to keep it that way. That's why we're having this conversation today.
I just want to push you on a thought.
Thanks.
And you have to be mindful of that too because some of that is covered by insurance, but some of it's not covered by insurance depending on what type of lawsuit happens. So some people will say, well, insurance covers it, but it damages a lot of other things. It doesn't always cover everything through that process. And I think the other thing that goes without saying is that you have to have a special type of person to work with. So paying somebody $50 an hour if they're not good with kids doesn't do any good. You know, so you also have to have the, the person who is intrinsically connected to want to meet the needs of special needs students, whatever that happens to be. Because if you don't, you're right back into what she was talking about. Because you, you get somebody who's not treating a kid right, that's going to create a bigger lawsuit for you than you can imagine.
Well, I think these two ladies are the experts on what we need to do to solve this problem. What are their suggestions? Is more pay a suggestion, paying this fingerprinting and testing?
That is a suggestion. Yes, we would come back with a list. We have not come, after our meeting yesterday, we were in discussion and we were brainstorming. And then it was discussed that we would come back with a proposal if that is sufficient.
And you guys, you know, as a board of education, you can pick and choose whatever, whatever you want.
We would love your input too from you guys.
I'd be in favor of paying for certification. Is that, was that on the table? Was that something we discussed?
There are lots, there are lots of things that are on the table. And I think part of it is not even just to recruit new people, but to retain the certified staff we have.
We used to do this.
Well, it would be nice as if you could have a different wage for people that you're retaining as to new hires, you know, like.
Legally, you can't.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, that's a, that's a problem.
But I do think there are things, and I'll just throw a few things out that we've talked about over the years. I think if you want to help retain people, you figure out a way to provide time for them to be able to complete paperwork. And we talked about how you can do that by hiring a substitute to cover half a day in certain buildings to allow half of a day for so many times a month for people to be able to get their paperwork done.
Haven't been able to.
But we can't find.
That was mentioned yesterday too.
I think that, that, just again, being brutally honest, I think you have to take a look at, is there some way to consolidate some programming to bring your resources more consistently? Even though we all know it's better for those kids to be served in their homeschools if we can. But I do think that through some type of consolidation, that's the only other option that's out there. If you don't get more people, and if you don't get more people, you're going to have to figure out how to, to bring those resources together. I'm sorry.
As a last resort.
Yeah, but, but yeah, I think you have to call that reality as well because of, because not, not always is more money going to fix the problem of getting more people. And if you don't get more people, you're going to have to face the reality of there is going to have to be some type of consolidating of, of programs through that process. And I think paying for certain things, but then you're going to have other people knocking on Dr. Kraus's door saying, well, if you're paying for this certification, why aren't you paying for this certification? Why aren't you paying for my certification?
I think that's the next reality we face in our profession is that as we face critical shortages across different subject areas and content areas, that is something that we have to be mindful of with science, math, with, I mean, everything is becoming.
But as far as the fingerprinting is concerned, I mean, I, I agree. I mean, if you're going to do it, we need to do it for everybody. You can't just do it for paras or do it for. And, and I'm okay with that. Because at the end of the day, fingerprinting is going to cost, you know, a hundred thousand bucks or wherever it is. And a hundred and forty-two million dollar budget doesn't mean no more.
But I do think there are some things, like what you were saying, that Dr. Kraus can find out that other districts are doing that. Because it is those critical shortage areas. And, and I think at some point, almost every position in education may become critically shortage. Because we're not getting 75 applications for every elementary position like we used to. But those high-needs areas, I think there are things that you can do to incentivize that legally. And that's the other thing, there are some things that tie your hands as a district that won't allow you to do that because somebody else is going to say, well, if you did it for them, how come you didn't do it for them? And I, and I don't know all those ins and outs. Brian probably knows some of those better than I do.
Yeah, well, I would like to, to leave the board with in terms of a kind of final thought from, from my perspective is, this is all a prioritization of what you feel like the needs are. You guys have the board set your priorities, understanding that your total pot of money doesn't change. And if you spend a hundred thousand dollars here, that may be for paras that you now can't hire because you spent that hundred thousand over here. Whatever four or more of you tell us to do, we're going to bust our tails to make it happen. But just understand that when you're paying extra for something here, there's something over here that you're not going to be able to find. So it's like I said, it's establishing those priorities, letting us know what you want to do and we'll do our best to make it happen.
But we need to hear the priorities from you guys.
Yeah.
And then we can make a decision.
We're telling you this is a priority.
Because we're not in the trenches like you are.
I'm a fan of the grow your own program. So, and you put out a Friday report, I believe, and we talked about it this morning. And if, I might be wrong on the numbers, but if I remember right, there were 18 applicants and four actually got approved. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So that's 14 potential people that could be teachers. We, I like the idea of applying that system in, you know, special education and other services. Obviously, there's a budgeting issue, you know. If our finance person says we have it, I would be in favor of approving more money for that. The other thing is, I think it's also an opportunity, like kind of how we discussed this morning. It could be an opportunity for the business community to get involved and donate. And because the need is there and it could be scholarships available or donations or whatever money that they would like to donate to. Because that's, it's 18 people and we could have all 18 of them. And then if that worked, you know, my idea, I, I think we should, we could and should apply it to, to other areas that we lack. I think it's a, I don't want to say a missed opportunity, but opportunity to advance.
I, I'd like to add a side note to something Dr. Van Zyl said when we were talking about maybe combining programs in buildings. One of the things that would have to be taken into consideration, and I with DLO believe like that's the last resort, would be number one, the accessibility of the building. And we have very, very few buildings that are all one level, that are accessible.
Doesn't have stairs.
We have Lake.
Two, right?
Parkway, Parkway, we can get by. We've had a student.
Steps up to the cafeteria.
Up to the cafeteria, but there's just three and then we have Pickett. And so if we have, and then for middle schools, we have Rubidu and Bodie. For high schools, really, it's just, I mean, Lafayette, we can limp through, but really it's just. So when you're looking at consolidating programs in special education, that's a significant piece that we are always, always aware of. If you have a student with a walker, if you have a student in a wheelchair, if you have a student, I mean, whatever it is with mobility issues and looking at where can that student be to access their education? And we have very, very few buildings in our district where we can make that happen. And so when you look at those buildings, then looking at, for instance, I don't know, I'm just going to pull it, I have Parkway. Parkway right now, to my understanding, is very, very, very full. It is significantly larger than it has been in past years. And so that being one of our most accessible buildings, if we moved a lot of students with IEPs to that building, then where do they go? Where do the other kids go? Because there's not room at Parkway.
Question, can you move students who don't have an IEP? I guess can we change the boundaries just for special needs kids? Is that possible?
Well, you already do. Because you have some kids that go to those programming classrooms that would be going to another school had they not had an IEP. So the IEP team can go through that process and you basically already have the ability to do that with your special needs students. And if you put a program or a classroom in a certain building and that's the only place that they can get served, you already change those boundaries. But that is a cost because you're picking up some additional busing miles that you normally pay for. But so long answer to your question is, you basically already do that. You don't have, you don't want to set boundaries and say, this is a special ed boundary. Because you already have the flexibility to assign those kids where they need to go.
And legally, we would look through the lens of, why can't we provide these services in this child's homeschool? Like what are, what are the barriers? Is, is there any way possible we can do that? And that's what we would always do first.
The, the other thing I'll say and then I'll shut up for a while is that you have about 80 staff members in this district that are special ed certified that aren't teaching special education. Is there something that incentivizes them?
To go back?
Yeah. To come back into a special needs classroom? And we even had talked about it last year, is there a way to say, hey, you come back and do this, you get two or three steps on the salary schedule? I, I don't know if that, all the legalities of that, but when you have another pool of possibilities sitting there that you could tap into, I think that would behoove us to take a look at, is there something that would incentivize us? Incentivize them to say, hey, I can come back and do that for a couple of years? Because not to disagree with Marley, if you say to somebody, hey, we're going to, you can't do this for three to five years. The likelihood, if they get tired after two years, they want to not be in it, they're going to, they're going to be able to go to another district and get hired. So you're going to lose them. But I think if there's some way to incentivize, you teach for so many years, you get so many years that you can be in a regular education classroom before we would ask you to possibly go back. I, I think that there's different ways to play incentivizing that, but I don't know what the answer is. It may be asking them, what would it take to get you to come back into the special ed program for a couple of years, commit to do that?
The thing we have to be careful of is the, the person can turn off or remove from their certificate the special education certification. So I think we have to be careful about that. So if we try to force them back into.
Yeah, and that's why I'm not necessarily saying, I'm saying, is there a way to incentivize them to want to come back into that? Because at some point, they are going to be looking at, if I make more money, it helps me in my retirement. Because selfishly, everybody who's in business and wants to retire someday is going to want to look at that.
Do you think that would create other teachers also looking at being like, well, why aren't we getting incentives to do other things?
It could, but if they, it could, but then the question is, if you want to be incentive, then go get a certification. Go get that high-needs certification, whether it's math, science, special education, and you can get that same. So I, I think that there's ways to, to build that in a way that incentivizes those high-needs areas. But we'd have to get legal guidance on how you, how you set that up and what it would look like. But you do have a pool of folks there that for whatever reason, aren't in that anymore.
So I, I know this, just to give you, just to kind of, so we can close this up. Our special education teachers look at, they, they know the situation we're in with staffing. And I know that Rachel right here at Parkway, who has 20 kids on her caseload and that is, and she has some significant kids with significant needs. Because we've had conversations about if we can't get more staff, I can't take any more kids. I can't, I don't know what else to do and then choose to leave. And so it, it really is a vicious cycle that we are in and we have to do something to stop that bleed. We really do.
I agree. And I think what Dr. Kraus said, I'm sorry. It's my first time doing the whole thing anyway. But I know what Dr. Kraus said about as a board, just prioritizing what we need those funds for instead of kind of like putting some funds somewhere else. It's really making sure that we have enough staff. Because our kids in special needs, they deserve to have, not only legally, but they deserve to have all, all the needs met.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think it was important.
And that's, that's what we have for you. I mean, thank you for, for your time and we are happy to entertain any questions.
Really good news, I guess. So what we're, what we'll do is we'll go back and we'll kind of create some recommendations from our standpoint and bring those back to you at the, at the May Board Meeting. from our standpoint, bring those back to you at the, at the May Board meeting. Everybody's gonna have to be involved, especially, you know, if it's money, then we're gonna have to figure out, we'll have all the dollar amounts and everything, and then, um, bring it back to you in May.
Mr. Reader, you had your name, Mr. Reader, you have something you wanted to share?
Yeah, maybe I should've asked several of these questions as we went forward.
No, please go right ahead. I'm ready.
But I did, so... And some of them did get answered, so this was probably a good thing. Uh, so, we kinda had to jump around here a little bit, but I do wanna say that, whatever we're talking about here, let's stop talking about it after this meeting, and let's just get it done by next meeting. One of those things being, if, of course, if that makes a difference, let's pay for their certification, let's pay for their fingerprinting, okay? Let's make sure that gets done from here on. But, now, uh, what brings up the question, do teachers have to be fingerprinted every year?
No.
How often do they have to be fingerprinted?
Anytime they change their...
Okay. So, that's why I wanted, so, I was gonna say, if the teachers had to be fingerprinted every year, or the administrators had to be fingerprinted every year, they should pay for their own. I'm just talking about filling this need that we need that's so tremendous right now.
Yes.
That can make us look bad. So, okay, so, and then another thing, there's no reason why we can't have it done, approved by the next board meeting, is give the option, starting next year, if somebody, anybody from the janitor to you, wanna be paid on a nine-month basis to a twelve-month basis, click the extra mouse when they sign up or redo it. Let's get that done. Especially if it helps hire people that we need. If it helps three people, we've still accomplished, like, let's not keep talking about it. Okay, so, and there's one other thing, but I won't bring that up yet, that I want to happen by next school board meeting. Because it's ridiculous, we're, keep talking about these things. We all agree about it in this room. I know we have to tell our fellow board members, but by next board meeting, they'll know and why we should be doing this. So this is gonna go back to over a span of, at the beginning of some of the stuff you brought forth, and again, appreciate your information very much.
Thank you.
And another thing I really appreciate about both you ladies is your passion for this. Because this is the toughest thing to do, special needs child, you know what I mean? So, especially just when it comes to simple things like bathroom stuff, right along trying to be able to teach them, uh, you know, anything, uh, as far as what we need, okay? Way back in the beginning, that's why, you said something about, we got a new student just last week. And you said, "Oh, my gosh," it was like, we had to do it, but what was that that we weren't doing that we had to come up with?
Well, this student came in with significant services in a specialized placement, um, came from a different state, so that always muddies the water a little bit as well. Um, putting that student in a specialized room...
That was one of the things then, right? A specialized room?
Special room.
That we didn't have?
No, we didn't.
No, we haven't, but then it just, because our caseloads are so high, that is then taxing on, it causes stress on the staff and on the students that are currently in that room, because we're adding another...
And we may not have another para.
Right.
Para to come in to provide that additional support, we need to find someone to come help.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. I just wondered, what we were, you know, that was so new, but it sounds like you had it.
Yes, oh, yeah.
And those things, those things happen all year long.
Yeah.
It's just that was an example of where we may need to pull a staff member or find someone to come and assist immediately.
And it throws our kids and staff out of routine.
It does.
And a lot of our students that are in that type of program.
Need the routine most of all.
They need that routine, and they need that consistency, and so it, it makes things a turmoil for a lot.
Okay, in our headcount, and attendance and stuff, it's really good to hear that our special needs kids, attendance is great. Do we get extra funding for special needs kids and their attendance?
No.
Compared to whatever we get from a person, huh? Do we get the same amount where their, their special needs costing us a lot more money, or if it's the regular student?
Well, it's...
Attendance wise.
Not for attendance, for attendance wise, it's the same, to my knowledge, yeah.
You get different, you get different payment for special needs students, not based off of their attendance. They qualify based off of their hours, or their minutes, and their severity, correct me if I'm wrong.
So if a student, if, um, I'm trying to think of the easiest way to explain it, if we spend more than three times the rate that we would spend on a typical pair...
Minutes.
Um, money, dollars, dollars.
So they say seven thousand dollars, we spend twenty-one thousand.
So if we spend over three times the amount we would spend on a typical student, we can request partial reimbursement for those funds, and we do every October. That's in arrears, so next October, that will be filed, but it would be used to cover for this current school year. We've already spent the money.
What's the additional cost then? What's the, what's the difference between the seven thousand and twenty-one thousand? What?
Staff, a lot of times.
It's not like there is...
Staff, the year's equipment.
There is equipment, programming.
Assistive technology.
It's not minutes, it's not saying, "Hey, this student needed three times the amount of minutes."
It could be.
Extended school year.
It could be.
Okay.
They could need that.
They might need a device.
They may.
And we also keep track of, I just went blank on the count, uh, not only the dollars that we spend, but we have our pairs track their contact hours.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
And that's part of, uh, what funding is that?
Tier monitoring?
And only, it's the maintenance of effort.
Right. Yeah. So we have to keep track of the maintenance of efforts, and so if you have, if you have a high-needs fund, that's what you have to be able to track, and that's more paperwork for your special ed student pair, pairs and staff as well. So get that reimbursement. So it's like anything, you want money, you've gotta, you've gotta do more work to get the money from the state or the federal.
Yeah, that's good, I appreciate that, I'm amazed, I just wanted to know, basically, yes or no?
It could be equipment, it can be staffing, it can be technology, it can be transportation.
The same money you track that.
Well, yes.
Right. You get that money.
Just a, for instance, Mr. Reader, I was subbing for the principal at Oak Grove, and we have a young lady in programming there, and she kept undressing. So I found and ordered these, these body suits that zip in the back, because she was very, um, very capable of undoing any other contraption that we tried to put her in. But she actually likes these body suits, and she wants to wear them, so now when she comes to school, she has several different colors, they zip in the back, and she keeps them on all day, so she doesn't disrobe at school any longer. And it was a big win, but we had to order them from the UK.
Yes.
Just, that's, that would be an example of those things that we would be reimboring first.
That'd be tough for six grade boys, I mean. So, okay, um, okay, so, another, uh, something you guys brought up, by Mr. Kraus maybe, was of, that six people in special ed left this year, or something like that. Now, did they leave education, or did they just leave, they are still in our district, but they moved over, okay?
Yes.
And all those were kinda veteran edge of special education kids, people? Okay?
And that's probably comparable to what happens almost every year.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Yeah.
That's how you end up with seventy to eighty certified teachers, special ed certified teachers in your regular ed programming.
Way like it's a thousand to one people that's in regular education going back to special ed, even if they have the certification.
I'm sorry.
What we're trying to do is get the ones who have.
It's unlikely.
We'd like them to come back. You mentioned forty people in our district already had, and then you mentioned about eighty.
I think you said there's about seventy to eighty.
Well, the difference is, uh, there are probably about forty who have sped certification, who have taught sped before, the other forty have never taught special education.
I see.
They got, they got the certification along with something else originally, and shows for that GEM Ed placement. So we've got a lot that have never taught special ed that have the certification as well.
Oh, so in all in all, in the same pay step, not a time, and stuff like that, does this, hopefully, does a special ed teacher make more money per hour than a teacher?
No.
Not, just a second?
No, they're just...
Okay, and so their education too, I realize when you go and get your education degree, um, the special ed education, you just go through that same program, like, just regular education. There's no anything extra to be a special ed other than, you get the certification?
Yes.
You get that for those extra classes for that, right?
There's a lot of extra classes for them, yeah. To talk about, um, appropriate instructional strategies, to IEP meetings, to legalities that you have to address through IEPs.
Your regular ed teachers normally take a class called the Exceptional Child.
They just take one class.
And they take one class, your special ed teachers, their certification probably is two-thirds based off of special ed program.
There's a perk to that, because I was a special education teacher, and you do have a lower number of kids. So a regular education teacher may have a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids on their caseload, when I may have had twenty-five to thirty, and it's mainly I saw the same kids all day. So it was less grading, but it came with other challenges, like the paperwork and running IEP meetings, and making sure you meet all those due dates.
And I thought, I felt, uh, maybe a request for the professional development?
Yes.
I didn't realize that we group our special eds with the regular teachers on that?
Well, we really need to, they need to also participate in our regular education professional development.
Sure, sure.
However, they also need opportunities for special education. For instance, a few years ago, we had a day where we brought in the Thompson Center from MU, who worked with our staff on autism. We have some specialized work that needs to be done with our teachers, and unfortunately, we really aren't afforded the time in the PE calendar to meet those needs.
Okay, so we, we do not have any special or separate, uh, professional development just for our special ed staff?
We, we do try to, um...
Job embedded.
We're job embedded, we have tried to find a couple hours in the calendar on one of the days, um, like, maybe we're hoping for possibly two.
Couldn't it be more mandatory, instead of you trying?
Well, that's, that's what we're saying, we wanna, we would prefer to have maybe a couple days, full days, um, for that, but we know that it, the way the calendar currently sits, we cannot do that.
But we do have two hours that aside, and we're gonna feed them. Two hours though is not, I mean, two hours, I mean, you know.
How often is two hours? Once a month, once a week?
No, two hours once a year.
What they're asking for is additional days.
We're asking for...
On the contracts of those teachers.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wow, that's...
They're coming in anyways.
A teacher, any teacher, regardless of what you teach, already has a hundred and eighty-one, no, a student, how many, a hundred and eighty-one days?
Hundred and eighty-one contract days.
Contract days, and that's the same regardless if I'm a special ed teacher or a regular ed teacher. My PD day is the same time, same day, whether I'm a regular ed teacher or a special ed teacher. What they're talking about is some more specialized time by maybe adding a couple of days to bring those special education teachers in, whether it's full days or a couple, you know, half-days several times a year to be able to do that, I think is what they're talking about.
So they might have a hundred and eighty-five days.
You have to pay extra for their days.
It would be different if you speak down, it's a contract.
Yep.
So it would be like a hundred and eighty-five day calendar versus a hundred and eighty-one day calendar.
Yeah. And I don't know, Dr. Kraus again would know that, if, how many districts do something like that, if that's something, uh...
It's, it's a mixed bag, some have additional days, some don't. Uh, we already have additional days for various, um, occupational categories. High school counselors have, I think, the lead counselor has nine, elementary counselors have one, middle school is somewhere in between there. So we do have additional days, Hilliard staff, a number of them have quite a few additional days. It's, you know, again, it just comes down to the priority, do you wanna pay for it? An extra day for special ed would cost about twenty thousand dollars a day, every day that you add.
So, four extra days would cost eighty thousand dollars.
For all the staff.
For all, yeah, that's for all the staff.
For eighty spent teachers.
All the special ed staff, not all the staff.
No, just the special ed.
Yeah, right.
That's eighty, seventy to eighty teachers.
Yeah, as near as I can figure, just taking my best guess, our average special ed teacher makes about two hundred and fifty dollars a day, um, and then you multiply that by, you'd have to take into account the, the retirement, the fourteen point five percent, but when you multiply that by, out by, I was figuring seventy staff, uh, when you add retirement, it's right out twenty thousand dollars a day.
Well, I didn't say that the, um, special education teachers do attend the professional development that is going on now. Would it be possible to have a separate, so instead of adding days, having a separate professional development for them on the same day?
They, they need to be in, in the regular ed.
They do.
Yeah, just because of the...
Curriculum.
The curriculum, they, they have to teach the same stuff. So, if you take them away from that, then they're gonna be missing out. Uh, maybe I'm missing.
No, you're correct, you're exactly right.
They're still in our district, yeah, and they're still working, yeah, they're still teaching.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, they're not normally working off of completely different curriculum or instructional strategies, they're just having to do some things differently. But it does help if, you know, they're, somebody who's working with autistic kids, they need to have more understanding on autistic kids, if they're having some behavior kids. Now, all of our kids, all of our staff could benefit from all those, but the people that are working on a regular basis with those students are the ones who need to have some of those foundational practices and strategies polished on a regular basis.
Definitely, and I do, I work for Progressive Community Services, so I transit for them, and they have, um, quarterly videos that we have to watch, or training, um, I don't know if that's something that we can do, I know that you need to find time and...
That's, we do have some online ways to do that, it is the time, uh, because if we do it during the workday, they need to see, service those minutes for the students, um, it's, it's the time.
So if we pull, if we pull a teacher out for professional development when school is going on, we have to make all of those minutes up. So if that teacher was, was supposed to deliver however many minutes of special education services, and we prevented them from doing that, they have to make it up at another time. So...
Yeah, and I also did have a question, so I know you said that the paras, um, are usually assisting some of our special need teachers, and one of my, um, relatives is a substitute, and she said that sometimes, if there's so many openings for substitutes and we can't find someone, then a para would step in and kinda teach that class.
Which is a problem.
Does that kind of affect to also...
It greatly affects things, but in, if they have a subs certificate and we don't have a teacher, and we don't have a para, I mean, not a para, substitute teacher.
Then we pull a para from...
When paras, when special education paras are pulled to be a substitute for a position that is not special education, it is...
Detrimental.
It is extremely detrimental.
And does that happen often?
Yes. And special education is funding the salaries of those para professionals, and I get it, I mean, we've talked, I've been, I've been a principal as well, so I know how hard it can be, but it, it's extremely problematic, legally and funding-wise.
Not, not to change the subject, but it looks to me like there's a workaround on what you pay special ed teachers by how many days you include in their contract. So, why couldn't you include extra days for all the extra, the paperwork that they do?
Some districts...
Above and beyond what you pay, somebody doesn't have to do that.
But you can, the challenge is, a lot of that paperwork's not gonna happen, it happens when the kids are in school. So you can pay them extra days for something like that, but they're still gonna be doing it.
I know a lot of teachers that take that stuff home with them and have to do it.
Yeah, but I'm saying that it's, it's gonna happen, most of it happens during the school year, it's not gonna happen during the summer, so they can get those hours, like you were saying, during the evening or other things of that nature.
But that is still extra time that they're putting in, and I, I know one speech and language therapist that put a lot of extra time in, you know, in paperwork.
And the other component, just not to muddy the waters even more, i- is that there also can be costs if we're not meeting the minutes with students on compensatory time. And it has to rise to a certain level, and let's say I'm supposed to have a hundred minutes, And it has to rise to a certain level and, let's say I'm supposed to have 100 minutes, but I only get 50, we still have to come back and make up that difference outside of the year. So some of that happens and I don't know what that dollar amount is, but that has an impact on us as well. If you keep, if we keep dropping staff and don't make up, have that time to be able to take place during the year, then you're forced to offer it during the summer, which is an additional expense. So.
Wish we are doing this summer, we have some kids that will be.
So we do that, we do that now, but that's part of the, if you can figure out a way to get enough staff where a majority of those hours are covered in the summer, you'll have some dollars to offset some of those things. And I don't know what that dollar amount is, but it still boils down to the number of people that you have.
Speaking of speech, are there some positions like speech that could be taught through video conference?
Well, you can provide therapy virtually for speech and language. The problem is then when it comes to assessment and meetings. So we have one therapist that works virtually from another part of the state. And she does a fabulous job. However, we have to have additional staff to conduct any sort of assessment or testing for any of her students. Because she's not here in person and she can't evaluate them herself.
You know, my wife was a speech therapist and from what I understand, you have to see what's going on inside that child's mouth.
A lot of times, yes.
And that'd be pretty hard to do on a TV, you know.
So right now, we provide virtual services to our students who attend Virtual Academy. We provide some virtual students to our parochial students, so, or non-public students. So this is something a lot of people don't understand that we failed to mention earlier, that if, if I have a child who attends a private school in town and they're identified as having a disability, the St. Joseph School District provides those services. So we send somebody out to that school and provide special education services. So we provide virtual speech language services to many of our private schools, also any students that are homebound.
And do they help with funding that or no?
No. There's proportionate share funding, but it ultimately comes out of our budget.
Well, their tax dollars are paying for it.
The reason why I ask is just from a consolidation standpoint, if you didn't have to.
Creates other problems.
Yeah.
So, Gabe?
Yeah.
I know, yeah, I've only got kind of two small questions, so, you know, I wanted to let you know, I'm getting to the end here. And I don't want you to miss tea off time. Looks like the rain's let up a little bit.
Too wet today.
You got more questions, Ken?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
So, so one is I don't, this is one thing that you can't get done by the next meeting, but I would have, whoever then, well, let's look at exploring with those certificates that we know we have out there now that left us. Let's ripen and incent that, let's go and ask them in the next couple weeks, what would it take to bring you guys back over? Most of the time it's gonna be money, but say they're working on, they've been here 20 years and their last 25 years, they could go back over there and do that because it's gonna add to their pension at the end. Whatever it takes to fill this gap is so important to make our school perceived compliant, especially with the federals. So, can't do it by next meeting, but the meeting after that, Gabe, let's have it done. So, but I don't know, Mr. Kraus, you'll have a way to reach out to all those people. Again, if we got them sitting there, especially ones who have already done it, and maybe they've been out there for 10 or 15 years, begin that incentive, there's gonna be money, I think, it's gonna be money. So, and if it's significant and much more, let the rest of the teachers complain about it. If they don't have the certificate and they don't want to come back, let them, again, we need that filled. And then the last thing was way back with, I think a solid, a lot of our problems and saving a lot of money, and believe me, I believe in the homeschool, in your neighborhood. I don't believe in these big garden parks and, I believe in Eugene Fields and stuff like that. When I took my kids to school, I wanted to know the janitor, I wanted to know most of the kids' parents, and you get to know that in a small school of 300 to 400, not in these big manufacturing factories. But on this particular situation, and I see it's coming through the Missouri State Legislature too, where they're gonna allow us to step out of sight of normal regulations and rules to do stuff, to innovate, to increase our, I'll bring that, I do bring with me, show it to you, but, so that we have, if we have to move a few kids around, let's see what that would be. So that, say we can, we've got one or two students here, seven over here, but by simply moving those two students, it makes a great advantage to actually all the students with all those services in that building. And I'm sorry we have to move, how many special ed kids do we have? We got 70 staff, approximately?
About 1,500.
Special ed?
Yes.
Students, oh, 1,500, right?
Yes.
Special ed.
They're not all self, they're, you can be, you can't tell some of our special ed students, they're just in a regular ed classroom just giving support.
1,500 of our 10,000 students.
And that's actually, honestly, that percent is very common across the state of Missouri.
Yeah, we're not even higher than anyone else.
I mean, 15% is actually probably in the middle. I mean, there's schools that have 18, 19, 20%.
But those, it's only the severe ones, I'm saying, 1,500 are the ones that are in IEPs in, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. So, and that involves 70 teachers. You know, so what, those 1,500 students, are there very many schools that have three or four?
No. No, they don't.
You already asked your last question.
Well, I was just saying, it was a heartbeat.
There may be three or four at a grade level, but there's not many schools.
I'll let you know when I conclude, okay?
You already said that. Last question, three questions ago.
Sorry, I'm not gonna get really the last of you, one of them was a joke.
All right, David, we're ready.
Okay, no more questions or comments, right?
Correct.
Next on the agenda, board committees.
You have set your board committees, I think all of you, for you, David, are in agreement with those?
It appears so.
Okay. And for you, you would rather not run committees through the summer unless they are absolutely needed.
As needed, it's more realistic to me.
We just needed consensus that we had them set?
Are you guys?
We're gonna be doing a lot of things this summer, so I don't think we should take them off the table as needed.
Yeah, they're not off the table.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you guys okay with the committees? And I've checked with Latanya and.
With the what? Are we okay with what?
With the committees.
Oh, I did have one caveat, whenever I have the chance, this counts my last question, well, this is a different subject. Okay, good. I was just saying that I'm really looking forward to having the assistant superintendent that's head of finance and operations. There'll be a lot more, there'll be a lot easier to communicate and, so, that is a real improvement, I appreciate it. You have a removal, now that we have a new person in that position.
Okay. You're okay with the committees, Mr. Reader?
Yes.
Okay. I think everyone's okay with this. And any more questions or comments?
We kind of eliminated the facilities committee work for the last year with the creative on drug. Now, I'm a little confused, is creative on drug done in May or are they coming back for another round?
I think there's gonna be something in October. So there's gonna be something in September and gonna be something in October is my understanding and then there'll be a recommendation, so it probably needs to go ahead and be put back on there now. Or not now, not today, but sometime in the next month or so and then we'll just re, we'll just say that reconvenes as soon as it's ready to go. You see what I'm saying?
The same thing with academics.
Yes, academics, well, what?
Same deal.
When do we get that one back then?
At the start of next school year.
Start of next school year.